Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the June 7th meeting of the Webster Central School District Board of Education. Would you please stand and join us in the reciting of the Pledge of Allegiance?
............................................................ Board members, you've had a chance to look at the agenda for tonight. I'm unaware of any changes to it. Actually, I do, there is a change. We're adding, under Board Business, Roman numeral five, letter A, number six, the Treasurers' Hopefully, being forty years old doesn't mess that up a little bit.
(laughing)
May we have a motion, please, to accept the agenda with the addition?
So moved.
Thank you, second. All in favor?
Aye.
And we are all set. All right, "The Board of Education invites the public to comment on matters regarding the school district. The public comments section of the meeting is a time for the Board of Education to listen. As a courtesy, we ask that you limit your comments to no more than three minutes. Comments naming specific personnel should be addressed privately or in writing to the Board in order to protect the individual's rights. And matters that would infringe upon student privacy will not be addressed in the public forum." With that being said, is there anyone present tonight who would like to address the Board? Seeing none, we'll move on to our liaisons. And, well, is Thomas or Schrader going to go first? Doesn't matter. Natalie, Erin? Doesn't matter.
All right, so as school's coming to a close, Schrader seniors actually had their last day of full classes today. Tomorrow, we have the ball, so the seniors only have to go for three classes to meet the requirement. Everyone else has hair appointments after that. But on Monday, we have the elementary school cap and gown walk-through, so that'll be really fun to see all of our old teachers from elementary school. And then, following that, we actually have the first-ever senior barbecue out on the turf, where one of the Schrader seniors will win the car for the first time ever, because the Thomas kids always beat us out for it every year. But we'll win one this year. And other than that, not much has been going on at Schrader. That was just part of the senior activities.
Yep, our sports have come to a close, except we have some track members actually going to States tomorrow out in Syracuse. I'm pretty sure for pentathlon and high jump, which will be a really cool experience for them. We also have finished our spring concerts. We had, I think, jazz band last night, and then our orchestra had a concert, both orchestra nine and symphony orchestra, last week. So that's, it's sad it's coming to an end, but everyone's excited for summer and ready to go to college.
And we'd just like to thank you guys for having us. I know this is our last meeting, but we really appreciate this opportunity, and we're going to miss doing this every month.
Yeah, it's been such a great experience. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you. You did a wonderful job.
Thank you.
And we will miss you. We really enjoyed how well you've represented Schrader. We've enjoyed the reports that you've given us. We've even enjoyed the humor that you sometimes show.
Thank you.
And we do have a little token of our appreciation for you. Yeah, I'll let you... And Sam, unfortunately, you're not a senior.
I have two more years left. Thank you so much. I've got a long while before I'm getting out. No, kidding.
But I have to say, Sam, as a sophomore, you've handled yourself extremely well, like a senior.
Well, thank you. I appreciate it.
So Erin, where are you heading next year?
I'm going to Brockport, actually, for business law.
Okay, great. Where are you headed off to?
I'm going to University of Maryland for marketing and government and politics.
Where are you going to be? See, you're a terror.
Yeah, yeah.
Don't they have a good lacrosse team?
Yeah.
Or do you go basketball?
Well, thank you very much. We wish you the best of luck.
Thank you so much.
Alrighty, so now on to the Thomas part, and it's pretty much same-old, same-old, as much as Schrader is. We had, you know, the sports season, the spring season came to a close. We had all kinds of wins here and there, and today, we had the Special Olympics, which I'm sure many of you have seen, and Mr. Gomina, that you were there and whatnot. So, I mean, you're everywhere, so I can't, there's concert here, concert there. Mr. Gomina is everywhere. Yeah. But the opening ceremonies included a torch run and a Special Olympic, and the Special Olympians, as well as the National Anthem sung by Webster Thomas's Olympian Anthony Vignere, and he sounded pretty amazing, if I do say so myself. And so, in the past couple of weeks, as we've been coming to a close, many awards ceremonies have been going on. The one tonight, as you know, Ben could not come here to this meeting due to the senior awards. I'm sure he's getting plenty. He is an amazing student. And there were Scholar-Athlete Awards on June 4th and Titan Scholar Awards on June 5th. Last night, we had our spring concert, which featured the Philharmonic Orchestra, Jazz Band, and Jazz Ensemble, and that was a pretty great concert. And what else has, what else has been going on? Oh, we had Hobie this weekend, which I was very honored to go to, the Hugh O'Brien Youth Leadership Organization out, and out at the University of Rochester, and that was a wonderful experience. If you don't really know what that is, I suggest looking that up, because it is a very moving experience in which you learn how to be a leader and you learn how to give back to your community. So I know in the next school year, I will hopefully be coming back here not only as a liaison, but someone who is going to be pitching to all of you a cause that I would like to maybe change or help out. So look forward to seeing that next year. But I'm very excited to have been a part of that. And that's all I've got for this last meeting.
You're all set.
What happened?
No, your mic wasn't on, that's all.
Oh, okay. Thanks, Sam.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sam.
Okay, Lisa, anything from WTA?
I'm going to put a plug in for the Special Olympics that were held at Thomas today. The teachers and the TAs said the kids had a blast. It was a great time. What a way to end the year for the students that participated. Yeah, it was excellent weather. The WTA is asking the school board members, if possible, we know you guys are very busy, if you are able to be more visible in buildings next year, so that you can have conversations with teachers and get to know what they're doing. There was something that was brought up at a meeting we had recently, that they were missing that, so if you take the opportunity, if you can, to stop in, it would be greatly appreciated. Also, we're going to resume inviting the Board to our ZEC Board meetings next year, so we're looking forward to them. And then, this is my last reporting. Sue Bournier, from, I believe, Plank South, will be replacing me next year, but I've enjoyed doing this. So have a good summer, and thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. You too. Have a good summer. Our superintendent's report?
Thanks, Mike. So at the request of the Board of Education during its November 2nd, 2017 meeting, so seven months ago, we began to explore and study and problem-solve around the complex issue of changes to our school start times. Since the very first district-wide start-time study group meeting in January, and under the leadership of Mr. Larry Wall, the district's coordinator of strategic initiatives, we had elementary and secondary work groups meeting throughout the spring and the winter to research this issue, gather community feedback, and discuss possible next steps. These study groups have looked at possible implications to our transportation, athletics, childcare, our academic program, elementary activity period, and in addition, I've also had the pleasure of personally interviewing more than 900 middle and high school students to get their thoughts on potential changes to school start times. The district held a second community forum this past Tuesday, 48 hours ago, and earlier this evening, Mr. Wall provided the Board with a progress update, including how that forum went, and also a recommendation to the Board. Based on feedback from community stakeholders and given what we have learned about adolescent sleep needs, the Start Time Study Group has given a recommendation to the Board of Education to consider changing start times to approximately 8:45 for secondary schools and 7:45 for elementary schools. Now, if the Board decides to move forward with the recommendation after, after they study all of the, all of the feedback over the next, over the next two months, in July and August, the district would take at least one full year to prepare for the change for the fall of, in September of 19. We would be committed to maintaining and enhancing our high-quality academic, athletic, and extracurricular programming, and ensure optimal use of before-and-after-school time, and we would also use benchmark points during that year-long prep time, and have a formal review of how everything is going after Year One, Year Three, and Year Five. Now, the Board will be reviewing this recommendation and perhaps making a decision in August or in early fall as to what our next steps will be. So thank you to the more than 200 community members and those 900-plus students who have taken the time to become engaged in this critical study that impacts our entire community. We will share a video of the Start Time Community Forum on our website and social media platforms next week, so please be on the lookout for that if you weren't able to attend on Tuesday. And lastly, because this is our, actually, not lastly, but because this is our last regular Board meeting of the school year, I want to congratulate our seniors, the class of 2018. This is a special group, and the end of the year is filled with moments that celebrate all that they've accomplished during their 13 years within our district. And the biggest of those moments is graduation Sunday, coming up in 17 days, on June 24th. I can't wait to shake the hand of each graduate as they cross the stage at RIT. Thank you to our entire community for supporting and loving and walking these young men and women to get them to this exciting moment in their lives. Now, lastly, I want to make sure that I thank Bill Kent for his service to the Board over the last year, and actually, for the past quarter century. Bill, you have been serving our kids and serving our colleagues. Your service is exemplary, but your friendship is even more special to me. So thank you, Bill, for all that you've done.
Thank you, Karen. We will now move on to Board Business. Since the voters approved the proposition for the purchase of new school buses, the Board needs to authorize the issuance and sale of serial bonds and notes to the amount not to exceed $1,550,000 to finance the purchase of these vehicles. Are there any questions to that? Then may we have a motion to approve this resolution?
Motion.
Thank you, and second. This vote does require a two-thirds vote, as well as a roll call.
Mike Guston?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Mike Saffaletta?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Jan?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're all set. We have a $100,000 capital outlay project for general maintenance improvements at Plank North. Now, the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act requires the Board to certify that this project will not significantly impact upon the environment. So the Lobella Associates, who are the architects of this project, have assured us that this is the case. So may we have a motion, please, to approve this resolution?
Second?
Thank you.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have a three-year lease agreement with the Webster Swim Association for the rental of the Aquatic Center and the Thomas Pool. Now, we've had this agreement with the Blue Fins in the past, and that's proved to be beneficial to our students and our facilities as well. So may we have a motion, please, to approve this agreement?
Motion.
Thank you, a second. Thank you, Bill. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving right along. Adequately funded reserves are vital to the long-term health and stability of our school district. Reserve funds provide a mechanism for legally saving money to finance all or part of our future infrastructure, equipment, and other requirements. It is being recommended that the Board transfer money from the unappropriated fund balance to our tax subsidiary reserve, our capital project reserve, our workman's compensation reserve, and our liability reserve. Are there any questions there? Then may we have a motion to approve those transfers?
Do you just want to point out, these are estimated in June?
Okay.
And we wait till we officially close our books and get audited come July, beginning of August, when we make actual transfers. So you'll have another resolution for actual transfers once we close down our financials for this.
The actual amount.
The actual amount.
This is just saying we will do it.
This is, yep, is a projection at this time.
Remind you, it requires us to do this projection?
We have to have it done by state aid.
And the purpose?
Just kind of informative.
Is it for the community?
For the community. It's good financial planning to always kind of have a good projection, so.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
We do have a motion on the table, so all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. The New York State School Board Association Convention is being held in New York City this year, October 25th through 27th. Now, registration opens July 16th, and by July 17th, the hotel rooms are probably gone. So we need to know if anyone is interested in going. I know it's early yet. We could maybe just say we're going to hold three spots, and people could fill it in, unless you actually know now.
I can't go either.
You're thinking of going?
Can't go either.
You can't go? Why don't we hold two spot, is holding two spots appropriate to the Board?
Yeah, it sounds...
Okay.
Glenn is not here, so.
We in favor of that, two spots? Okay, and you can always cancel if need be the case. All right, thank you. Well, being 40 years old, I know it's sometimes it's really hard to concentrate, but we do need to have a Treasurers' Report.
I'm sorry, I fell asleep.
I heard that when you get past a certain age, you...
Monday is, Monday. So Treasurers' Report for March, you'll notice a large influx of state aid. March is usually the, one of the largest months where we receive a significant amount of state aid. Other than that, our rates are holding very stable, but I think this summer, now that Chris will have had six months under his belt, I think we're going to explore some investment opportunities with some other banks and see what we could do as rates are climbing. We're noticing some other areas where we could be more aggressive, perhaps, to drive some interest revenue for the district.
Any questions for Brian?
We can even have a line item.
We do. It's 75% smaller than what it was 25 years ago.
Crazy.
May we have a motion, then, to accept the Treasurers' Report, please?
So moved.
Thank you, second. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, we have a second reading of our Board of Education calendar. Notice the August 2nd date. Is there any objection, starting at 8:00 in the morning? It was scheduled for 9:00. Can we move to 8:00? You're hemming and hawing.
We'll just get there when I can.
Okay.
Yeah.
So there's no objection? We'll make that?
Is 8:30 better?
Yeah, yeah.
Compromise.
So are we compromising or going 8:00? I don't know what the...
I like 7:00.
No, you're going in the wrong direction.
7:00 is better.
This will limit your...
I can really try to do 8:00. Just get mom up early.
We could always do another one. All right, so let's make the change 8:00. Board agree on that?
Yeah.
We also have talked about having a debrief on August 2nd about Responsive Classroom. I don't know if that's going to occur after talking with Brian. Would the Board, if we can't do it on that date, would the Board like to schedule another date to hear a workshop on that? I'm not hearing any...
Yeah, but remember, we're going to keep that August date, though, for start time analysis.
Right, but we're looking at, at the Responsive Classroom. If we can't do it August 2nd, we're going to have to add another workshop.
When they're back in September or November? Is that what you're thinking?
Whenever. Will there, will there be keynote, or will there be key trainers? Do we actually need the consultant, or...
We can certainly do a workshop. We could workshop you guys, sure. We can do an overview.
An abbreviated version? There would be something.
I think we can still do it on August 2nd. We'll either do it with a trainer from Responsive, or we can do it with Gregor P.
But it sounded like the trainer was not available during the times that we were...
Well, that would be working with our teacher.
Okay. All right.
Depends on your schedule that day.
So with that being said, is there anything else that we need to take a look at on that Then may we have a motion to accept the calendar with the adjustments?
I'll make, go ahead. Second?
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. You've had time to consider the changes to Policy 4500. Please note that it does require a yearly report to the Board regarding aspects of safety and security of the district. Are there any comments or questions in regard to this? It is the second reading. Then may we have a motion to accept Policy 4500?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. A second. Thank you, Bill. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Since we're talking about safety, I just want to mention that there is an agreement with the Town of Webster and the Webster School District in regards to the School Resource Officer. We're actually going to have that in the consent agenda, but I just thought, since we're talking about security and safety, it's important to point out that we are having a second School Resource Officer.
Yes, and, but the consent agenda, the one that you have, is for Officer Hurley.
Okay.
So just so that you're aware. We will have another one soon, probably within the next four weeks. So, you know, at some point in, in either July, the July meeting or the August meeting, in the consent agenda, we will ratif, or you guys will hopefully approve another contract for the second SRO. That actually was suggested to us by our students, that we, that we adopt that and support that.
Thank you for that clarification.
You're working on a person?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
All right, let's move into our school reports, liaisons and reports. It's the end of the year, so there might not be much going on, but Bill, do you have anything?
I don't have anything specific. I would just like to note that Craig and Heather were just delightful to work with. I, Craig runs a very tight ship, and I would never call when I was kind of dropped into his office. I imagine he was rolling his eyes every time he'd get a message saying, "Bill Kent's waiting to talk to you," but he always invited me in with a smile on his face and had some more conversation. So I just feel like to thank both Heather and Craig for inviting me in to find Bill so comfortably and so warmly. Thank you.
I'm sure he invited you in joyfully.
Joyfully.
It was ignited.
Jan, anything?
I went to the last meeting on May 14th, and they are having a June meeting at Clem North, and it's this coming Monday, June 11th. And some of the big upcoming events is our June 9th Red Wings Family Night. Kids get to hold that big flag on the field during the National Anthem, so that's an exciting event. Field Days and Picnic will be June 13th. Flag Day Ceremony is 9/20, on the Thursday, the 14th. And Great Pie Moving Up Ceremony is the 18th. This meeting we're having on Monday is going to be more informal, refreshments. Members of the PTSA are encouraged, bring their kids along, and I think the topic is really going to be upcoming events next year, but one of the continuing conversations is going to be, how can we involve more parents? Although, I think Clem North does a nice job, they would like to get more people involved, as I'm sure all PTSA's would, but they do a wonderful job. I'm very impressed.
Thank you. Sue?
Schlegel Road had their last PTSA meeting two Tuesdays ago, and they had their new officers there, and they have a nice group of people ready to take over the PTSA for next year.
Thank you. Karen?
Dewitt's last PTSA meeting is Monday. I think that's your birthday. Yeah, yeah. So I'll be attending that, and...
Instead of the 40th birthday party?
PTSA's done a wonderful job all year. They're a great group of people. They, they conduct a lot of activities that involve families and kids, and they just have a very nice rapport with parents, and they seem to accomplish a lot very well. So it's been a pleasure to work there and to be there, and look forward to doing so next year as well.
Thank you. Clem South has their Flag Day Celebration on the 14th. The 19th is their Award Assembly and Moving Up Day, and the 20th is their Staff Appreciation Luncheon. And on the 15th, Thomas has their Art Show from 5:00 to 7:00. If you get a chance, that's really worth checking out. It's on the 15th. I believe that's a Friday?
Friday.
And commencement's on the 24th, as Karen has indicated. Schrader's in the morning, Thomas's in the afternoon. We probably should work out some driving arrangements, because we only get two passes, I believe. So we can just email and see who's going, and we can pick up, and who can drive. Sue usually likes to drive, I know, and are you going that day?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm happy to drive. I can go pick everybody up. Maybe we can all remember our gowns this time.
Oh, boy.
Sorry.
I think also, I think Willink is having a talent show on the 15th. We were invited.
Oh, that's right, yes.
In the morning.
In the morning.
Is that when it is?
Yeah, it's in the morning.
In the morning, so I sort of got that penciled in. I haven't answered back, but that sounds like a lot of fun, too.
What time did you say the Thomas Art Show was?
I think it's...
In the morning. It's got to be first, first...
Willink?
No, the, the Thomas Art Show.
5:00 to 7:00.
5:00 to 7:00, yeah.
5:00 to 7:00.
Yep.
And then the Willink was early.
Yeah, 8:00 to 9:30, I think, or Block 1, maybe.
Okay, we'll move on to some other business. For those that don't know, the Monroe County School Boards Association, I wasn't planning on it, but I was re-elected to the position of...
I didn't know that.
President.
Bill is overjoyed to hear that you are serving on his presidency.
Enjoyfully accepted, no, no.
That's why I sent you a note saying, "What can we do to make mentoring better?"
I said, "Keep you president," and they listened to me.
So, yeah, I'm going to have another year full of work, but so please be thinking about serving on one of our numerous committees. We will probably ask for your participation at our reorg meeting as to who would like to be on information exchange and labor relations and all the other things that we have. Now, the New York State School Board Association recognizes Board members who continually expand their knowledge and skills, and their recognition program consists of four achievement levels. Now, our association strongly believes that leaders are learners, and so our first recognition goes to Linda, as she earned the first level, which is known as Board Achievement Award. And we have a certificate for her, but she's not here, we'll give it to her later, for her work in leadership development. And our second recognition goes to Tammy, as she earned the Level 2 Recognition, which is known as Board Excellence, for her work in governance and leadership development. So we have a certificate for you. There you go. Congratulations, Tammy.
Very nice.
Now, being a school board member can be a challenge, and it's also an exciting experience, and it presents many opportunities to contribute and improve our school community. We are saying goodbye to one of our members tonight, who definitely contributed and improved our school community. We want to thank Bill for his services and his dedication. Even though it was a short time, Bill, you did provide the board with some unique talents, all the while collaborating as a team with the other board members as we moved to accomplish our board goals, which was the greater good of student learning and student growth. We acknowledge your efforts, and we want to say thank you to you for your year of service to our district, and more importantly, to our students, and so we have a little token of appreciation for you. Hopefully, you're over 18.
Best I've looked.
We'd also be remiss if we did not recognize Shelley. This is her last meeting with us. We wish you the best in your retirement, and we appreciate all the work and effort you've done for our students and our special ed program. So best of luck in whatever the future holds for you.
Thank you very much.
All right, we'll move on to our standing committees. The Audit Committee met recently. We heard from our Claims Adjuster. This auditor received over 8,000 checks from the General Fund, the School Lunch Fund, the Trust and Agency Fund, the Capital Fund, and the Special Aid Fund. Now, the auditor only questioned 22 out of those eight, over 8,000 checks. And these checks were void for very simple reasons. The payee's name maybe was misspelled, or the check was written to the wrong payee, or maybe the address was incorrect. And when you consider that, that particular case, Webster's doing a very, very good job. And the auditor said that any thing that she found that was not satisfactory, it was done to her satisfaction when she finished it. It also should be noted that Ray Wagner's firm has merged with, I forget it right, Mangle Metzger Bar. And Ray couldn't be with us that day, so he had an associate come, and he discussed the scope of services and the prior year recommendations. And everything appears to be up and up for Webster's situation. Brian, any additional comments to that, or?
Nope. He gave a nice overview of what to expect, what's being changed as far as from a global, new rules and requirements for our audit and financial statements, many of which we've adopted early, so really aren't a change for us. But we also discussed a new internal auditor as well, that we're going through that process right now to have a recommendation to the board come probably July for that.
Thank you. We actually don't have much on policy, right, Sue, 'cause we just took care of 4500 today?
Yes, I just wanna ask the board to consider being a member of the Policy Committee. We have a lot of fun, and it's very engaging and igniting. But, you know, it's first come, first served, and we can only have three people, and I'm already there. So you only get two, two more spots.
I'm gonna continue.
So, you know, contact me early.
Do you provide soup, your homemade soup? That's pretty good.
No, it's all business.
We have had it at our house in the past, but not recently.
Thank you. And-
We're all set with strategic planning.
We heard strategic planning today, so.
Right. Now, my only question is, Larry, when do you think the website will be up and running?
Next week.
Oh, okay. Okay, great.
I just have to figure out how to turn it on.
Isn't that a power button?
So, any, anyone who's interested in looking up to see what strategic planning is up to, there's all kinds of links, all kinds of information. Total transparency there, all meeting notes, everything that you wanna see, so that'll be-
Is that under, is that gonna be put onto the Board of Education or under Webster?
Off of the Board homepage.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, anything else? Then we'll move to a consent agenda. The board members, you've had a chance to look at this consent agenda already. It consists of the minutes of our workshops and meetings. It consists of the recommendation of the Superintendent for Personnel Actions, the recommendation of the Committee on Special Education, as well as the recommendation of the Committee on Preschool Special Education. There is that intermunicipal agreement with the School Resource Officer, with the Town of Webster included. There is also the recommendations for the senior staff and confidential staff for their salaries. There's a uniform bid, as well as cooperative bids for natural gas, ice cream, milk, juice, produce, beverages, musical supplies. With that being said, may we have a motion, please, to accept the consent agenda?
So move.
Thank you, a second. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And with that being said, we are going to adjourn with the motion. We have a motion for adjournment, please.
So move.
Second?
Got it? All in favor? We are adjourned. Good night, everyone.